Call to order the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for the Building, Planning, Zoning and Public Works for December ninth, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We will now take the roll call. When your name is called, please respond by saying here. Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mulhall?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
So as you can see, the mayor is not present. As we've done in the past, it's incumbent upon the committee to appoint one of its own to act as the chairman of the proceedings.
I would nominate Mr. Peterson.
That was fast. I have a motion to appoint, he finished my sentence. A motion to appoint Alderman Pearson by Alderman Albertini. Is there a second? Second by Stevens. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Pearson?
Okay, thanks. Do we have any public comment?
Nope.
Okay. We have one, there's no public forum. We have reports of officers, boards and special committees. Building, planning and zoning unfinished business, there is none. Building, planning and zoning new business. Building Department update.
Thank you, councilman. For the month of November, we issued 51 permits for a total value construction just over a million and a half dollars, 15 of which were commercial, 36 were residential, no single-family homes. Commercial industrial update, MRS, looks like they're wrapping things up out there. Landscaping's in, they're inside doing some racking and automation. UConn has begun automation, shipping for the project and getting ready for the transformer stuff for the power for the plant. Seven seven five logistics, the Piranha Company is doing some electrical and some racking in there. The old Lung Fong on North State is working on rerouting their hood so it doesn't dump on the Apollo anymore. Parking lot. Looks like we've closed 19 property maintenance issues. Seven tickets have been issued for the closed violations. It looks like we got something on Buchanan. Buchanan roof circle for chickens. Tall grass weeds, garbage, inoperable vehicles. That'll end my report if I have any questions.
Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. I have one quick question. I noticed as I go past Walmart's construction, that big field to the right now, looking at it from the highway to the right, they have two big water towers. What are those for?
I believe that's redundancy for the fire suppression system.
I was wondering, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Controman? Thank you. We have planning department update. Gina?
Thank you. As you know, last month we had the replat and special use for deer woods for the accessory structure. Tomorrow's plan commission agenda is a little bit heavier. There's five cases. South Town is being split into six separate properties so that each building is on its own individual lot. They are hoping it will help with the sale of properties. And then Dodge Lanes is up for subdivision into three lots. And then a special use for a Starbucks at Chipotle and the third lot still is yet to be determined. So that all has their meetings tomorrow. And we did get a case in today for a rezoning that will be at the January public hearing. So cases are not slowing down this winter. Site plan reviews, it looks like there could be an expansion for parcel out of Town Hall Road. Just wrapping up some final inspections to go along with the case, industrial and commercial that Kip was talking about. Zoning for vacation is holding steady. Historic preservation had the awards program in November. That went really well. Two of the recipients were overcome with emotion and gratitude for being recognized for their hard work they put into their historic properties. So that was really nice to see and be appreciated like that. The commission also has done a fantastic job with fundraising this year. So today I sent out property maintenance grant letters. So they are bringing that grant program back, which helps with the historic homes with tuck pointing, dirt chimneys, porch repairs, painting the wood siding and stuff like that. So I'm glad that they were able to raise enough funds to get that going again. Obviously, Hometown Christmas was last week, so November was just kind of getting ready, getting everything in place for that. Scans. And that is that for November.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you, Gina. Public Works unfinished business, none. Public Works new business and Public Works Department update. Director Henderson?
Thank you, sir. Update, leaf content, collection continues. Mother Nature is cooperating with us, so I believe we're back on the south side this week. We'll be back over on the north side next week and we will continue to go until all the leaves are collected and/or snow cover gets to the point that we can no longer pick up leaves. So that work does continue. And our tree inventory, as part of the grant that we rewarded, the tree inventory portion is 95% complete. So for those that are just real anxious to find out how good you did on our little quiz, we should have those final numbers in for our next committee meeting. So we will talk further then about that. That's all I have for an update after there's any questions.
You don't have a teaser on that count yet?
No teaser.
Any questions for Director Henderson? Comments? Okay, thank you. And next then, we have a constituent request for a stop sign on Whitney Boulevard. And you want to take it or you want me to read this to the record?
Either way.
Go ahead.
So memo, memo in your packet, there was a request from a resident on Whitney Boulevard concerning about the high rate of speed on Whitney between Logan Avenue and Sixth Street. So all the cross streets between Logan Avenue and Sixth Street, right now they're all two-way stops, including second, third, fourth and fifth. So we reviewed all the existing data of each of those intersections and none of those intersections warrant an all-way stop condition. So based on that information and the requirements of IDOT's manual and uniform traffic control devices, I would recommend no additional stop signs be installed. I believe there's been some discussions with the Belvidere, with police about enforcement and I think some of that perhaps has happened. I know the speed trailer's been up there. I know we've installed a couple of additional speed limit signs within those areas, but as far as installation of a stop sign to control speed, we don't do that, not supposed to do that. And again, warrants for an all-way stop are not met at any of those intersections between those two points on Whitney.
Is there, is there a motion that anybody wants to make then to install a stop sign notwithstanding Director Henderson's review? I will say, I know I have seen that, I think Chief, you've had the trailer out there, I think, a time, time or two. And the other observation I would make is that the driving surface on that part of Whitney is really not that great anymore. I mean, if somebody's wheeling down through there at any high rate of speed, they probably don't value their suspension.
Alderman, you're, you're, you're correct. That street was being considered for an overlay, so I don't know with the speed, speed concerns, perhaps we forego the overlay for a while, but no, it is, it is up for overlay selection here in the near future.
And that, I mean, if people think that they want to use it for a raceway after that, I guess, I would think that the people that are doing that are probably pretty limited and that I'm sure that the chief can, can see that they get a ticket or two to make sure that that, they're dissuaded from any further speed, speed activity. So if there's, if it's going to fail for a lack of emotion, I think we'll move on then. And we have a certificate of satisfactory completion from the Client's Ford subdivision plat number three on the remaining public improvements.
So memo in your packet is a certificate for myself for the remaining public improvements of plat three, and those remaining public improvements were, at the time sidewalks and pavement striping. Those improvements have been completed. There is currently, a current letter of credit out there in the amount of $50,759. And I would recommend that the City Council approve a resolution accepting the remaining public improvements for plat three of Client's Ford subdivision as constructed and releasing the letter of credit in the amount of $50,759.
Is there a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Any discussion? Some long overdue unfinished business?
Yeah, actually, it was just part of a closing out. They had a cash escrow for plat two for two sidewalks that were, and they called about that, about getting that released because that work had been done. And then going through the files, I found what appeared to be a current letter of credit, which the owners of Client's Ford didn't have a record of anymore. So then they checked into it with the bank and sure enough, it's still out there. So that's what's preceded this action tonight.
Okay. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, we have a motion and second on the floor to accept, to approve a resolution accepting the remaining public improvements for plat number three of Client's Ford subdivision as constructed and releasing the letter of credit in the amount of $50,759 even. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion's carried. And we have item D wastewater treatment plant sludge heaters replacement from the ARPA funds and design and build.
So as we alluded to at our last meeting, we have some ARPA funds remaining that the City Council has authorized in the amount of $1,021,356.69 for replacing our two sludge heaters at our wastewater treatment plant. All ARPA funds must be obligated, parentheses, under contract, very important, under contract, by no later than December 31st, 2024. The sludge heaters are only available from a single source and the replacement is of an emergent nature. And based on that information, I would recommend that the city utilize a design build process to complete this project. Attached to the memo was a proposal from Baxter Woodman Bowler for the sludge heater replacement project in the amount of $1,320,500. An owner's contingency of $50,000 is included in that total. I would therefore recommend the City of Council adopt a resolution. I believe on your desk tonight, the city attorney has placed that resolution waiving the bidding requirement pursuant to sections two, 700 A and B and approving the design build proposal from Baxter and Woodman. The work will be paid for from ARPA funds and sewer depreciation funds.
And I'll also note for the county or the committee's knowledge, there was a version of the proposed agreement in your packets. Attached to the resolution is another version of it that you can look at over the week if you want to. But we got the first one in and had it in your packets before I could review it. I went back and forth with Baxter Woodman a little bit, made sure that the, the bond requirements were in there and stated appropriately, made sure that all the statutory language as far as prevailing wages and all my workers and public works, things like that is taken care of. And also they agreed to eliminate the requirement for arbitration of any dispute and instead have agreed to litigate any dispute here in Boone County, which makes it much easier for us. So it's been tweaked in our favor.
When this resolution then is going to be the final form that we will, that we will have on our agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion of that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens and a second. Alderman McGee, second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, can you tell me what this owner's contingency is? And then what the performance bond and payment bond, which is required? Can you talk about that a little bit?
So the owner's contingency is when we have a project like this, of this type, size and nature, there's always some unknowns or possibly some unknowns. So we included a $50,000 owner's contingency account, just account for those that may come up. So that's a plug number that we utilize for this. So if there is a situation that arises, we have the ability as the owners to off, to go ahead and approve that 50,000 or prove a change to up to that 50,000, anything more than 50,000, we're going to have to come back for counsel. But basically that 50,000 is provided for our discretion to use. And keep in mind that the, the majority of the cost of this project is the actual purchasing the two heat, sludge heaters themselves. But because of their size and the nature and the existing pipe work and stuff that's within that building, we're actually going to have to cut and, and install an outside door big enough to be able to get these sludge heaters in and out to replace the existing ones we can build to break down. But because of the new ones and the way they're built and constructed, we have to basically put them in as is. So that we will have to do that. So the majority of the cost is basically modifying the building in order to get the access in and actually the sludge heaters themselves.
And the bonds aren't the full amount of the contract price.
Okay. So.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the 50,000, that is the portion that is coming out of the sewer depreciation fund? Because otherwise we have to use that grant. What if we don't need, what if we don't need that?
No, we will, we will utilize the, the ARPA funds, the grant, grant ARPA fund monies to the 1.1 million. The estimated cost in, as it says in here is 1.32. So there's going to be some more depreciation. So the balance, whatever difference we do will come out of depreciation. So yes, theoretically that 50,000 would come out of depreciation more than likely.
And just to ballpark, Brent, how much do you believe right now is available in depreciation, sewer?
Depreciation at, at this moment is probably around 300 to 400,000. Keep in mind, the lead time on boilers is about 24 weeks. So project time on this, because of that lead time, project time on this, you won't be looking at spending depreciation portion because we already have the ARPA money in hand. But the depreciation portion probably won't be expended till probably a year from now, theoretically. So the depreciation funds is a budgeted line item that we go through the budget and those allocations are made on a monthly basis that are deposited. So, so we will have some, some funding, additional funding built into that, in that time period.
And I think it's good to move now. Those have some years on them as it stands now.
They, they do. And, and the real critical piece of this whole thing is the ARPA has to be obligated. We have to have this contract signed and done before the end of December, so.
Okay. Any other debate? Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and second on the floor then, that the city adopt the resolution waiving the bidding requirement pursuant to sections two dash 700 A and B of approving the design build proposal from Baxter and Woodman Boiler in an amount to exceed, not to exceed 1,320,500 even for the wastewater treatment plant sludge heater replacement project. This work will be paid for from ARPA funds and sewer depreciation funds. All those in, in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. Thank you, Brent. We have item five, other unfinished business, none. Item six, other new business. Item A, police and architect agreement for patrol remodel. Chief Woody?
Thank you. If you would turn to the memo in your packet, a few months ago, I was made aware that the sheriff's department will be doing a major remodel in the lower level of the public safety building. That'll cause them to repurpose one of their offices in the lower level of the PSB that they have allowed the police department to use for our community policing coordinator. The county, in an attempt to mitigate that impact, has offered at their expense to remove and expand the wall in the training area marked red in exhibit A. That wall is shared with the Belvidere Patrol Office. The expansion would provide an additional 368 square feet of space for the police department to use for the patrol office. I would propose using the 368 square feet to construct two offices as well as remove the highlighted wall in exhibit A. That would allow the department to expand the patrol office, create more usable and functional space, as you'll see in exhibit B. My proposal would be to use a combination of impact fees for construction costs and asset forfeiture for furnishings once the construction is complete. Included in your packet, you'll find an architectural proposal in the amount of $16,300 for designing and providing construction documents for the police department's patrol expansion project provided by Allman Ernest and Martin. Any future costs will be assessed once the project has been awarded. I will request a motion to approve the expenditure of $16,300 from the Belvidere Police Department impact fees, authorize the mayor to sign the owner architect agreement for design plans for reworked officer work areas and offices within the lower level of the Boone County Public Safety Building.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. Alderman Flurry is our second. Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any debate? Or questions? How healthy is the impact fee fund, chief?
When I started looking at the possibility of using it, which was about a month ago, I checked, it was approximately $112,000.
Good. Well, would, would you anticipate using much of the rest of it then to complete it once the engineering is done? Is that where you think this is going?
Yeah, that would be our intent to use the additional funds for any construction costs. If there are, you know, any funds left over from there, looking at supplementing any furniture, equipment costs with impact fees and then ultimately supplement any remainder with our asset forfeiture.
So offhand, and I don't price this stuff out, but you would think that 368 square feet would probably not burn up the rest of that fund, I wouldn't think.
I don't anticipate that. I am not in construction, so I'm kind of waiting to see ultimately what those RFPs come back with. But I would hope that we're, you know, going to have plenty of funds in the impact fees to allow us to do, you know, the minimal construction that we're looking for.
Good. Thank you, chief. Any other debate? Hey, we have a motion and second on the floor then to approve the expenditure of $16,300 from the Belvidere Police Department impact fees and authorize the mayor to sign the owner architect agreement for design plans for reworked officer work areas and offices within the lower level of the Boone County Public Safety Building. All, all those in, in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion's carried. And then item B, we have a grant agreement between Illinois Department of Transportation and the City of Belvidere for the police department.
Thank you again. If you would turn to the memo in your packet, you'll find grant agreement HS dash two five dash zero zero seven nine between the state of Illinois, Illinois Department of Transportation, otherwise known as IDOT, and City of Belvidere, otherwise known as city. The sustained traffic enforcement program, otherwise known as the STEP grant, is designed to increase highway safety through, through the reduction of motor vehicle crashes, fatalities and injuries, increase proper use of occupant protection devices, and reduce impaired driving. The program accomplishes these goals by implementing strategies such as enforcement, training, outreach and education. Mandatory enforcement campaigns occur on Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, St. Patrick's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day and Labor Day. These campaigns concentrate on impaired driving and/or occupant protection, but also target on contributory causes of crashes such as speeding, electronic device use, failure to yield, disobeying traffic control signs and signals. Officers are hired back at an overtime rate and the city has reimbursed 100% for the total hours worked by all officers for each campaign through allowable grant funds. IDOT has approved $55,632 in grant funding for the City of Belvidere for FY25 STEP grant program. I would request a motion to approve the grant agreement between the state of Illinois, Illinois Department of Transportation and City of Belvidere for FY25 and accept $55,632 in grant funding for traffic enforcement.
Hey, we have a motion, a motion by Alderman Flurry and a second by Alderman Albertini. Thank you. Is there any debate? Further questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
So chief, is this, it says mandatory, is it mandated by the state?
The grant's not mandated. We apply for the grant and ultimately they approve us to receive it and then the council has to accept it. The campaigns are mandatory on those dates that I provided.
Okay. Is this, is this where you have like the seatbelt checkpoints or is this just additional patrols on the streets on those days?
Part of the campaigns used to be the seatbelt checkpoints. We've kind of gotten away from that and it's more roving patrols, trying to accomplish the same thing, enforcing occupant protection. But yes, that would be the same grant that we, the grant did provide us funds to do those types of details, yes.
And, and then how many officers? 55,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money for multiple officers on that many days.
Yeah, it, it's divided up equally and then ultimately the sergeant that's in charge of coordinating the program takes the money that's been allocated, divides that up, figures out how many details they can do. The state has certain requirements that we have to stay within and then they divide that money up evenly amongst the different campaigns.
Chief, I'm glad to know that the, the seatbelt enforcement checkpoints are going to be kind of back burner items because it's always been a source point with me that the legislature lied when they passed the seatbelt law that said that that would not be used to initiate stops, but that it would be, you know, cited when an officer saw that. And it, I mean, to have the checkpoints just specifically looking for that has put the lie to that for a long time. But I, I was glad to see that they're, it's, it's calling for a lot of distracted driving enforcement. And you know, how many times do you hear that, that complaint that people just ignore that willy nilly anymore? It seems like it's, it's honored more in the breach than the observance. So I, I think that part of it, it looks like a really good pursuit to me.
Yeah, the state has modified the requirements over the years and, you know, have adapted what their expectations are as far as the grant's concerned for various reasons. I, I know it got to a point where those traffic checkpoints for seatbelts, you know, for the most parts, you saw a high compliance rate, which is good. So in, in an attempt to maybe cover more area to identify some people that could be in violation of not only that, but maybe some other things that you wouldn't see at a checkpoint, the states allowed us to kind of expand what we're able to do to try and identify and enforce those types of violations.
Good. Any other questions for the chief? Comments? Okay. We have a motion and second on the floor then to approve the grant agreement between the state of Illinois IDOT and the City of Belvidere for fiscal year 25. the State of Illinois IDOT and the City of Belvidere for fiscal year twenty-five and accept fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars even in grant funding for traffic enforcement. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? The motion's carried. Thank you, chief. And item C, fire, we have a AFG grant from, for dual-band pagers. And Chief Shadle, please.
Thank you, sir. In your packet, there's two memos and two motions. They kind of work together. But this is the AFG grant from 2022 that we were awarded in August of 23. So that grant, you may or may not recall, was for sixty-eight dual-band portable radios for the four agencies within the county, so not just City of Belvidere. Us being the administrator of the loan, we had to go out and get the RFPs and make all those decisions on behalf of all the agencies in the department. Originally, what was approved and budgeted for was six hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. So the radios were budgeted for about ninety-five hundred each within the grant. When it was all completed, the cost of the radios with the radio speaker mics ended up being about eighty-one hundred dollars. So there was money left over. So there is ninety thousand and forty-six dollars and twelve cents left over. So how that works is you can purchase additional equipment with that money if it's approved by FEMA. So over time, I made amendments, worked with the other chiefs to see what they need. One of the main things that we didn't budget much for in the grant was charging equipment. And so just trying to be as reasonable as possible, we were just going to be purchasing, I actually had some budgeted for this year, a few thousand dollars under eighty-two hundred equipment. So with the money left over, we were able to purchase that charging equipment. Now, the other side of that, one of the difficulties in utilizing StarCom for the volunteer departments is the fact that if we switch to the StarCom, their pagers, all the pagers in the county aren't going to work. They won't, they won't hear anything that comes over that StarCom. So they actually do have dual-band pagers. These aren't like phone pagers, they're just listening devices. But they can listen to both channels, multiple channels, VHF or StarCom. So that is the paging equipment, the dual-band pagers. What we'll use those for is backup in our stations for paging and alerting. If our main system goes down, those will still receive the signal, signal over the airwaves, and then we can hear that. And then also for members who live in town, and it would be beneficial that they have that for recalls or things like that. So that's what we'll use those for. So that's the background to both these memos. Now, the first memo is for the dual-band portable, dual-band pagers. All right, now, the dual-band pagers are not Motorola specific. So, you know Motorola, how it works with their Motorola vendors is they have single pricing, and if you, it doesn't do any good to go to this Motorola dealer, to this one, to this one, if you're shopping for Motorola equipment. Because even to get a quote from a different Motorola dealer, you have to sign, sign a letter saying, hey, I'm not using this vendor anymore, I'm using this vendor. So that's irrelevant. But for the equipment that's non-Motrola, and that was not part of the original grant, that's this first memo. So I went out and got proposals from four different places to get the dual-band pagers. And you'll see the second page after the memo, or even that first page, you'll see the range in prices there from fifty-eight thousand to forty-seven thousand. So the motion that I'm recommending, this first motion, is that we procure these pagers from SK Electronics, and their quote is under ABIP LLC, which is the lowest estimate at forty-seven thousand eight hundred and three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Will be reimbursed forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-seven ninety-nine by FEMA, and three thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and five cents from the other three fire agencies. And our net cost will be eight hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents. The recommended motion is motion to approve purchase of sixty-four unification pagers, thirty-seven amplifiers from SK Electronics, provided an estimate sixty-eight oh nine for said cost to be paid out of line item zero-one dash five dash two-twenty dash eighty-two hundred.
We have a motion by Alderman Fleury and a second by Alderwoman Frank. Thank you. Motion's over for debate. Questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So chief, are these the exact same pagers and amplifiers from these different vendors?
Yes, they're completely universal.
Okay. I was just like, programming from nine hundred and sixty dollars to four thousand two hundred and eighty, that's quite the...
So there, there's four departments, so there's four templates. One of the vendors, I believe, charged three hundred and fifty dollars each agency just to set that up, and then like twenty-nine dollars per device. The low bid, I think, was around, it's in here, but off the top of my head, under twenty dollars a device too. So it's just what, what they would charge to do the, do the work. But yes, it is exactly the same equipment and exactly the same programming.
But I think the out-of-pocket price is outstanding when it's all said and done. Now, it's, Sarah, would the cost sharing from the other departments, and is that going to go back in that same line item? How do we account for that?
I'll have to look at it, but probably. You can go ahead.
So the first half, I believe Sarah's going to handle it differently as she's explained to me. But the first half was just pulled out of that line item. It was over five hundred thousand dollars that's in that line item as a cost. It is coming from that line item, eighty-two hundred. So it is an expense out of that line item because that's how Shannon wanted to account for it. From that money, we were reimbursed. So it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't, that's a spending account, not a, so on the other side of it somewhere. We did receive back five hundred and fifty-four thousand seven sixty-one ninety-nine. So all those other radios already, the money's been received from FEMA and the other agencies.
And so we don't have to expense it somewhere else? I mean, potentially, that beefs the general fund back up then?
No, in the past one, I was able to time it. So we received the money prior to the expenditure, actually, so.
Okay.
Going forward, we're going to do a grant expense item for the fire department.
Okay. Other debate? Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and second on the floor then, to approve the purchase of sixty-four unification pagers, thirty-seven amplifiers from SK Electronics AB LLC, provided an estimate number sixty-eight oh nine for forty-seven thousand eight hundred and three dollars and seventy-nine cents, be paid out of line item zero-one dash five dash two-twenty dash eighty-two hundred. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? My motion's carried. Thank you, chief. Now, the next item then, the grant equipment amendment.
Thank you. This is very similar, same explanation for why there was money left over. But this is the charging equipment that is specific to Motorola. So it includes everything you'll see on the next sheet, which is a spreadsheet. You'll see that it's chargers, batteries, programming charges, and then the, their radio headset earpieces. So they're just for command officers. It has a earpiece and a microphone. So on there, you'll see what each department has requested. And again, this all was approved by FEMA, identified by cost and unit number, and was approved by them. So this motion that's requested is motion to approve the purchase of Motorola equipment as outlined in quote number one four six zero 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 six two one for thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve cents to be paid out of line item eighty-two hundred, whereas our net cost will be one thousand one hundred and one dollar and fifty-eight cents.
Is there a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderman Fleury and a second by Alderman Albertini. Is there any debate? Any questions? Again, I think the out-of-pocket is outstanding. Again, very good. That's very good equipment to get for a song. Hey, if there's no other debate, then we have a motion and second on the floor to approve the purchase Motorola equipment as outlined in quote number one four six zero 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 six two one for thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve cents, be paid out of line item one dash zero five dash two-twenty dash eighty-two hundred. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None? The motion's, motion's carried. And there being no other business, is there a motion we adjourn? A motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski? Or you have a question?
I have a statement, actually. I just wanted to thank Chief Shadle and Chief Woody for Saturday. The shop with the cap and firemen was great. The kids were awesome. The families are going to be very happy. And also Gina, thanks to you for hometown Christmas. It was great. Lot of turnout, so everybody was happy. Good to see you there.
Very good. Good, good you remember. Job well done. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion we adjourn? We have a motion, is there a second? Alderwoman Gramkowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned at six forty?